You think? We think you will. I'd call this publication of the town of Wausau order and the purpose of our hearing today is to get the public input on the USDA facility grant and loan application. And this is for the completion and the furnishing of our fire department. All council persons have a copy of the...
Well, we have a revised copy here.
Okay.
And I think it's about the same thing, thirty-three thousand and something. Kitchen appliances.
Yeah, our contribution is thirty-three, five, sixty-four.
That's Stu Corrigan's Mary, thirty-three, five, sixty-four.
And the total of the grants will be one hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
There's gonna be actually one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred. And the loan part, which includes our bond council and our local council, is in with our thirty-three thousand, it's gonna be thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Okay.
So we gotta have council.
Okay, this is the...
This is the revise, this is what you're signing tonight.
Okay, this is just kind of our work. Okay, if you remember, Mrs. Chief Smith met with us last month and talked to us about these things, we decided to pursue this, assuming that we're going to have a place to pay back the loan portion. And if you read your minutes, we were assured that that would probably happen and not hurt our budget. And as a matter of fact, we may have even some money left over from the law. So, Ms. Mary, does anything you need to tell us or would like to make sure that we haven't overlooked?
Well, yeah. And so, like you guys said, it's to equip the fire station over there. And I did make some changes to the feasibility report based on just, you know, completing some lots within the actual feasibility report and then adding the seven thousand dollars in legal fees, you know, to do the loan. And so, that did come out to a loan in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and a grant in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred. And so, and what they base the loan payment on is, you know, pledged revenue. And so, what I'm gonna recommend, that the pledged revenue would be, you know, what's in the interlocal agreement between Washington County and the town of Wausau. Margaret said there's, what'd you say, thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, so, which would be sufficient. I mean, you know, you have your expenses for the fire department and so as long as we can justify over the last three, five years, so you have at least about twenty-eight hundred dollars available for debt service, because that's what it's gonna cost you, is about twenty-eight hundred dollars a year for annual debt service. And the interest rate is at two point two five percent. They're probably gonna do an amortization over fifteen years, I suspect. So, no less than ten years, but my recommendation would be fifteen years.
And you said we could pay that off at any time?
Yeah, there's no payment penalty. You know, the downside is, of course, is, you know, you gotta take out loans, you know, so that's gonna cost you seven thousand dollars in legal fees, you know, to do those bonds. So, one thing I need to get you to do tonight, though, there is a loan resolution which is just saying that the town agrees to take out a loan in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three forty, and then a grant in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, nine hundred. And as part of that resolution, and as part of the funding package itself, is that, you know, we can get the money set aside, but still not obligating you to anything until you sign, you know, the bonds. And so, hopefully, we can get the money, you know, in the next thirty to sixty days and hopefully it comes out of Hurricane Michael funds. Like I was telling Margaret, it could be that, you know, they don't have any additional Hurricane Michael funds, you know, nationwide right now. The state of Florida has used all their Hurricane Michael funds, so you're gonna be competing for Hurricane Michael funds that, I think it's Maryland and North Carolina have not used. And so, because those are the other two states that were entitled to those community facility grant funds. And so, it's kind of good timing because since the states haven't used their funding, you know, then it just gets the ability for Wausau to be able to take advantage of funding not used. And so, otherwise, let's say that, you know, during this process of time that those funds do get used before the full application gets on up to the national office, then, you know, it may be next year's funding before it gets funded, which would be around October the first. So, let's hope that that's not the case, you can still compete, you know, for national office funding, you just have to send it up to the national office. And if there's some community facility grant funds available, then it'll get funded. So, and I don't foresee anything really changing, I think we pretty much have completed the full application, just need to get you to vote on a resolution to accept the loan and grant, okay? And do you have any questions about anything, Dan?
Do we all understand the interlocal agreement that she's talking about, the thirty-thousand dollars? We know what that many is. Do you know what that many is, John? That's the money that the county gives the city under an interlocal agreement. We've got eleven fire departments and they fund each one of them to a degree. And ours is that thirty, plus or minus, thousand dollars that she's talking about. And from that money that we give from the county, we will pledge twenty-eight hundred dollars or whatever this payment for clients are being, we will pledge that much towards the law. That's the money she's talking about.
I understand.
Okay. And to say back what she just said, I think is that we have a funding resolution that's we're going to borrow the thirty-five thousand dollars, couple more thousand this once here, but the hundred thousand, a couple thousand, twelve, four, five thousand. We're going to do a resolution and we're gonna be funded in this amount, one hundred and five, plus or minus. We don't know what pool it's coming out of, but it's gonna be federal dollars that we're borrowing. Okay, any questions for Ms. Gavin?
A motion.
Okay, plus the pleasure of the council. What we need is a, if we want to do this, what we need is a motion to adopt the loan resolution and authorize the clerk and the chairman to sign any documents related to the loan and grant.
I'll go ahead and make a motion the way you said.
We have a motion that we pursue the grant and loan application that we've just discussed. Ms. Gavin has presented to us, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Have a Ms. West?
Yes.
Ms. Walzheim?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
The chair, but she is.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
That girl hurt bad, didn't it?
Down there, she wants to take these with her.
Yeah, I could go ahead and take them with me now and then that way I can send them and send them on to USDA.
Okay, we have a few minutes before our meeting starts. If you give us a minute, we'll sign everything, okay?
I think it's all good. I think I've signed all nine there.
How's it down?
It's healing, pretty good. So, what's that, the days coming along?
Y'all think I'm answering, if you want, then.
One here that I don't see a title for, for you or me, either one, that may be somebody in the agency or there's one of us on there.
That, there's, on the loan resolution, there's three pages, the last page is not signed until you go to closing, so that might be what you're...
Okay, okay, I'll sign.
Margaret, you sent me the affidavit of publication that you're already...
I did, yes.
What time's your meeting start? Five, okay.
I got a couple of interviews due.
See if we can have a hearing here or general, but do them. Can we do it during the meeting?
I don't know. I'm done, we're getting close, y'all.
No, 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 we started, we had a public hearing starting today, we were trying to do a loan and grant, so please, I'm tired.
I did for the first week.
Did you?
And after that, it just seems to, you know, it's just basically the soreness from the wound, you know? But now, it's not real, I mean, it's just not...
I think I've tried it before.
Oh, okay, two times.
Two times every sitting, I think.
Okay. Mine, I should've said, where do you?
I tried it.
Here, you want it out?
Should do it, should make it work.
Mine was not major, blame it on me, but I had this kind of support and...
It looked bad on me.
And I talked to a couple of ladies, the worst part for me is the break, whoever had it, it was a collar, it was a...
I think you got it off.
But that's, I did, I probably didn't take it, I probably didn't take three months.
I'm waiting for it to do all the lights available, but I just need that to sign.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, sometime, we got it after the meeting, I got a bunch of checks here.
Okay, are these here?
Yeah, I need to say a couple of things for a weekend, one.
Okay, we asked our, the other applicants that we had to talk to, the big beard, and we're supposed to start at five, so we can get to some end, we can start the interviews, if we come to the hour that we're supposed to start our meeting, we'll start our meeting. We may have to hear the interviews into the meeting, is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
What you need to tell us?
Okay, we have two applications that were, because they were not going to interview per our attorney, Mr. Carter. One of them is a convicted felon, so he's not to be considered. And the other one is, he is, he's pretty young, he's good, his only experience, though, is he's been a bartender at Cowboys since he turned eighteen years old. He has no experience of anything else other than that.
He probably fazed it.
He could probably come by.
What else could we want?
He's a good guy, but, you know, it's just not, he didn't make the cut, the qualification.
He'd probably heard a lot of good stories, yeah.
Very good guy, very lucky family, you know, he just don't have...
So, we're going to sue Mr. Rivera's and Mr. Whig...
Yes, we are.
Okay, matter which way we get it?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, which one's, uh, whiz?
The redheaded.
Rivera, right. He's got a good, he's got a good looking application, he's got the best looking application.
This guy, he, Mr. Rivera, he's had a lot of talk and all that, you know, he's had a certificate and everything, but never had a job. I'd be working somewhere.
One of them, or, you know...
Yeah, we've done it right after this day with you, you know, Daniel, so we can have the link to the record. Is there an affidavit for our first?
Yeah, I'll be back.
Let's see, is there a river here?
You can have a paper out there.
He used to work at West Point. He used to work at West Point.
Yes, sir.
Never again.
He's last man.
They don't favor him. Right.
Mr. Rivera's?
Yes, sir.
Can we call you Timothy or Tame?
That's whatever's best, whatever's needed.
What feature call do we have? We appreciate you coming to interview with us this afternoon. You read the job description and went through the application process, so you know what we're looking for, is a maintenance person here for the town, that's going to do a kind of a full service maintenance person, official. Some plumbing, some electrical, some carpentry, lots of equipment, mowing, building, maintenance in terms of clean up when necessary, grounds cleaned up, and a number of things like that. Do you have any questions for us, first of all, about the job?
How many days a week? Almost four or five days a week? And how many hours does it offer a week?
I think what we've agreed on is we're going to start at thirty-two hours, four days a week. This has been up until this point, a forty-hour a week job. If it doesn't look like you're keeping up, I think I'm the one who had reservations about that, I think.
And I think most of the great boys want the forty hours, you know, most of ones that apply that have really needed the forty hours to be able to make it, you know?
So, we can go back to five days if we choose to do that.
And I think that would probably be...
I think the five days would be probably best, you mentioned.
Well, when we get in our meeting, we can vote, we'll discuss that, but it's, right now, we're interviewing everybody based on the same interview we did earlier, so it's fair. And it was thirty-two hours, four days a week. It sounds like that they changed later at the night's meeting, and, but it has been a forty-hour a week, forty-hour a week job up until David had left us. And we started fourteen dollars an hour. You'll be on probation, you'll have to pass a drug test and physical and so on, you'll be on probation and probation, the, just the fifteen dollars an hour.
Yes, fifteen.
Just fifteen dollars an hour. We usually have a raise every year, as long as I can remember, we have, even in the years from some other agencies, we're not able to give raises, we did, maybe one percent to three percent or something like that, it's kind of been a norm, that's every October. And that's, I think, a kind of thumbnail of what we're looking at. All right, anybody have questions or where do we begin? Ms. West, we're going to begin with you. Questions, expectations?
What about, like, say, for instance, if we have, like, a water line bust and it was, like, say, on a Saturday, would you be able to come in and do it on the weekend?
Yes, sir. I live right there in Vernon, off Shady Grove, that's an old park. I also, I'm sure y'all know, remember St. Mitchell. I worked for him from the time I was twelve to the time I was eighteen, when he lived in Vernon. I worked up, I worked for him to the day he died. He got other jobs. Also worked with a man named Brady Washington that lived just south, he used to live south here, he's gone now. But I worked in, I helped build the water sewer treatment plant in Vernon, also helped build the one in Port Saint Joe with Mr. Washington. I've done, I built houses on the beach, done plumbing, done electrical, do some, I do my own, auto repair, smart, I mean, I've done it all. So, I also got my, I went to go tech for every plumbing operation I've dealt to.
So, you do know how to operate the back end, and you wouldn't have no problem putting in the water surface here if we didn't do that, no?
And that's curious to me, that you have a certificate and that you can do that if you've never had a job or you've shown a job where you use those skills.
I did when I first got out, it was for Sykes Sand Pit, it was right there on Highway twenty to seventy-seven, it was with Timothy Minor, which used to be my baseball coach back in middle school. And I did it for about four, six months, I did it right out of school, I just had a child as well, too. And when I was doing it, we had an issue with, we learned dirt and hopper, to mix dirt and fill the trucks, and we'd have people walk up under the bucket. And he was, I kept telling him that, you know, you can fill the bucket, start jerking because you blow on hydraulic fluid. And I was telling him that, he was supposed to get something about two or three days later, so he didn't get none, and we had people going up over that bucket, and we were responsible for anything that happened to the machinery. And I would have quit my job, said I didn't want somebody to get hurt and leave my work. And I just, yeah.
Where were you working then?
I was working for Tricane Trifitation, that bank, I went and chipped the officer. July would've been three years this year. I went and applied at Budweiser because they were cutting our hours, and they're also hiring people that quit a year before, after they cut hours. And, so we were barely getting thirty hours a week. And then, the pay wasn't very much at all, and I was offered a job at, I was offered a job at Budweiser, said they were just waiting on a background, they told me to be Friday, they said by Friday you'd have everything back. And when I told my supervisor, Sandra, that I applied, and now I was just waiting on the background check to come back, and then I was going to spot.
Do you have CDU?
No, sir, I do not. I drive the buses, in the van, I just didn't drive a big, big bus. They had two buses at the yard that we had to have CDU's drive.
Are you still wanting to get from Budweiser?
I get them on that, that's been a month ago. Almost not. I told my supervisor, twenty-eight, not last month, but a month ago, I believe, and that's what he let me get.
You're self-motivated?
Sir.
Are you self-motivated easily? You want to look for something to do with that?
Yes, I believe in staying busy, I believe the more you stay busy, the faster the days go by. That's always been.
Generally, our method has been that we have a talking question here. The routine things that you want to come in and do every day, we all want to have to tell you. Check the fluids in the backhoe, the things like that, you know, when the grass needs mowing, you know, and some things like that. But occasionally, we may be made aware by, in a reserve, or just find a covert or a pothole or washout or some extraordinary thing, we do a work order and pick it up from Ms. Margaret, complete the work order and turn it in. Are you good? Can you do, can you do documentation, do you do documentation well?
I know when I worked with, I had to do a lot, in previous jobs, I had to do a lot ordering stuff, staying close to that, we had to order tires and do inventory, with working with Tricane, we had to keep up with our own hours, we had to do our own paperwork, we had to check the buses, I mean, we're responsible for, you know, the equipment we use with Tricane. So, yeah, I do know how to do, I used to be able to read blueprints, but it's been a long time, so I've never had to read blueprints.
You might want to bet that.
Yeah, well, with our water system and all, I guess you may have...
We have plans, yeah.
...because we had to find our cutoffs on the ground junctions and things like that. I'm thinking that what we're looking for, what we're going through transition, is a good time to correct anything we're not happy with. And I think that, I think that what I'm looking for, and I think in our previous interviews, I think I heard you say this, maybe I interpreted something wrongly, but when you get that job order, it said where you was and all like that, I kind of like to know that you spent three hours working on this repair. It took two yards of concrete, or four buckets of sand, or two joints of pipe, kind of like to know...
My inventory.
Follow a material inventory and some things like that, that's the kind of record to keep that I'm talking about. That's something you think you can do easy?
Yes, sir, and that'd be a way of keeping up with the budget as well, too, knowing what you're using, yes, sir.
And I feel like, you said you look for something, I feel like if you look for something to do, then you'll find cleaning.
I'm sure there is.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure right nowadays, a few fire hydrants, we don't even know where are because they deep in the grass and weeds and some things like that, that needs to knock me that away.
It's not hard to find stuff if you look.
Mr. Porter, any other questions for?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Ms. Walzheim, you think we have an address?
No, same like y'all covered it, we, you know, I've studied this, I don't have a lot of questions, so...
Ms. West? Do you have questions, other questions for us?
The only other question I have is, you show me the rate of pay, how often y'all do it, by weekly or?
Weekly, we get weekly by year.
On Thursday?
Thursday.
Every Thursday?
We hold the first week, you know, but then after, we pay.
What's that?
You get eight hours a month annually, eight hours a month sickly. Now, you're annually, during probation time, we request that you don't take a vacation. Our probation period is six months, that you don't take a vacation, you know, or, we know there's extraordinary stuff, but you're sickly, if it's necessary, use it, you can use it. You have paid health insurance after the six-month period. If you are hired permanently, after six months, you'll get health insurance through the city.
Get twelve holidays?
Twelve holidays, you know, you don't get thirty-six anyway, but...
I'll be, yeah, I'll be and see if I can get a job with the city.
And I just made another holiday today, did you see that?
I didn't, but I expected it.
It happened, they signed it into the law.
What, what was that?
Juneteenth or something?
Juneteenth.
It's June nineteenth, is Emancipation Day, you know, it's a new holiday, signed into the law today.
Okay, man.
We're not gonna get it right.
Be careful about commentary, but we just got, you just got lots of holidays. We just got lots of holidays. I never did figure out my holiday come on Saturday and Sunday, he was already off anyway, like you had to get a day off from work.
But he sure took it when he was in Washington County.
I didn't have a choice.
I don't think.
We can keep the choice, we can fix that. Okay, thank you, sure.
We appreciate you. We'll let you know something by Monday morning.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Williamson, if you will, if you will, we need to do something differently now. Our regular meetings takes us to start at five o'clock, we need to do that, you know, to be, to do our legal stuff, we need to start our meeting and then we will take a few minutes and we will either, can we just get into the meeting and then interview him first?
After Steve does his...
I don't think anyone...
After Steve, we can do that, yes.
After Steve?
Right.
Don't forget about me.
I don't have Steve, oh, okay, okay. Okay, got you under the agenda audit, I mean, we've been under the...
Yeah.
Actually, they want to go into me, right?
You can, I'll say, go to your place while you're...
Okay, close to putting the hearing portion at the nice meeting, and now we've opened the city council meeting for June. If you would please stand with invitation by Brother Ross Hill. If you would please stand with invitation by Brother Ross Hilton. I didn't verify the number of years, but I'm going to guess fifty-three years in ministry. And he is a certified, uh, uh, commissioned corrections chaplain. He lives in the Lucas Lake area as a part of the Wausau Sainte God Church and by extension, a part of the town of Wausau. Brother Hilton, if you would.
Father, we just thank you for conscientious leadership. I'm thinking more about when the multitudes were coming to David and all their skills and all their battles. And in the middle of it, you said the sons of Ishicar understood the times and knew what Israel ought to do. We pray for the leadership of this county. It's a small county, but Lord, you make small things, make mighty things look so small. We ask you, Father, to guide the, the thought, the process. And Lord, we ask you to bless what is going on with this county. Give the leaders the knowledge of what needs to be done because they understand the times. We just ask you, Father, in the name of Jesus, to move in this midst, a seal on the wall, the sign that says, "In God we trust." That is a precious thing. I remember where you said, "Some trusted horses, some trusted chariots." But we all remember the name of the Lord our God. Father, we just ask you to bless what goes on in this county, in this city. Bless our city inhabitants, keep the ones that are exposed to danger, our first responders, safe. And Lord, give the leadership that they need here, that they can make the right decisions. And we'll give you praise for it all in the marvelous name of Jesus. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord.
You look for a pledge, salute, pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Hilton, you're welcome to stay. I know your schedule may be calling on you, but.
Could I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wolfsham, do you have somebody out here I worked with? I can't remember his name, an international company years ago. We called him Warsaw, so I knew he was.
Liberty National, you talking about?
Sir?
You talking about Liberty National?
No, international paper company.
Uh, Roland, no, Bobby Junior.
Bobby, yes.
Yeah, Roland Walton, Junior.
Is he still alive or well?
Yeah, he's still alive.
Well, I wanted to know.
He lives about three blocks this way, yeah.
Yeah, he's still alive.
Thank you, y'all have a great evening.
And, and I think he probably hasn't recognized Bobby because they go to the sanctuary. It's a larger church. They may, you know, you get mixed, you get lost in the presence of him. Does attend church. He's relatively new to the, to the church.
He is, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. He, he used to be on staff at Central Pentecostal Ministries, or Longstreet Pastoral Penitentiary. Okay, uh, you said the consent agenda, uh, which looks like it has nothing on it, but the agenda and the minutes, uh...
And y'all have the workshop minutes, uh, and the, and the gene package?
Yes, uh, workshop and the, uh, last, uh...
We don't have a workshop here, they're being a.
This is the smallest agenda, this is the smallest package that I remember. I won't say forever, but for a long.
It's a long time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so what's, what's the, uh, the consent agenda? The chair would entertain a motion to approve, adopt?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda and a discussion on the motion. Mr. Wolfsham?
Yes.
Park, yeah. The chair votes yes. Okay. Steve?
I would have liked.
Well, come around, come around.
I would have seen you today. Morgan.
Yeah.
Okay, so two months over.
Uh, all my friends here, you know, he just fell on his ears here. D M S is not here.
No, that's where they both had something today.
They'll be here next block, see you. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Katie Cap? On behalf of Wausau and the Recreation Department, we appreciate you taking your time, your money and effort to support our children and our community. We like to present you this plaque for our appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your dedication.
Get your pants in there, Steve.
Yeah, waist up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What's that your last name?
Huh? Good.
Dave, what's your last name?
Morton like Salt.
Morton, okay.
Morton Salt. You guys on here from the lodge?
Yes, do.
Both of them, come on up here. Oh, come on, man. Come on. You don't want to take the waist up? On behalf of Washington County, I mean, on behalf of the town of Wausau and the Recreation Department, we appreciate the lodge supporting our children, giving your time and money to put these kids to do things in the community of baseball and softball. We present you this plaque for thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name's James Bosch.
Close.
Spell that last name?
B O S C H.
We didn't, D M S couldn't be here and a few of us couldn't be here. The next meeting. But.
Please wait.
Sir?
Please wait.
Yes, sir.
But on behalf of the Recreation Department, the whole Washington County Community Board, we want to appreciate y'all being there for the kids and being there for the community. And the Rex Department's supporting me all the way. We still got a bunch to do. Um, before I leave, we're planning on a fish fry on the fun day of Possum King Queen. Uh, Recreation Department's coming to the fish fry to bring people in for dinner for the, uh, Possum King Queen. And to help the Recreation Department out. So, y'all come and eat.
And that's going to be in running at this?
It's going to be.
Uh, this will be Possum King Queen, the red thing.
It's August, it's August.
August, August.
No, it's Friday night.
Possum King Queen's August, it's.
That's Friday night. It'll be Friday night, obviously, I'm thinking around four o'clock. Yes.
In Vernon.
In Vernon.
Uh, thirty-first of July.
But the Recreation Department is doing concession stands for the Possum King. So, we're planning on doing a fish fry, bring people in and to probably support him to go on the Recreation Department more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. You're doing good.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, just on behalf of council, I haven't seen you, I've had Katie's in a while, but we're glad that you could be with us tonight.
I'm already working at the house before you come in.
Okay. But we, we appreciate you being a part of our community and the business that you have here. We appreciate that as well. It's what, uh, Steve has just acknowledged, you've forged your contributions to that. And the lodge has always been, uh, a contributor to our youth program, to the activities here in town. And, uh, the lodge, uh, and when I say mysterious, I mean, in your rights and things like that, I mean, in the, in the way that it's, uh, kind of universal with, with those number, those people who are members of the lodge. I don't know that I've met you gentlemen, most of the people we used to know that was in the lodge was our grandparents and uncles and cousins and people that lived around the area. But we're, we're glad that you're here as well and we're glad for the thanks of the lodge and this for us, too. And Mr. Wolfsham is the liaison to the recreation. And I tell you, he was faithful, wasn't he, Steve?
Yes, sir. He and we care about both. We're at every game.
I made, I made a couple of buildings, I saw you. But I, I made a few of the games, but Mr. Wolfsham's been very faithful.
Yes.
Thank you for what you've done for the council as the liaison to the fire, to the, uh, recreation.
Well, it's my privilege. I got entertainment out of it.
Yeah. A, a deep, dark secret that not a lot of folks knows in the day, he was a pretty, he was a pretty mean glove.
Oh, yeah.
Had pretty good, some top second base.
Well, he lets them all know about it, too.
Yeah.
No, I know.
All right.
Do you have a pancake breakfast?
We will have pancake breakfast. That's the sort of fun.
Thank you, and again, thank all of you gentlemen. All right, moving right on, we don't have anyone signed in. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us that isn't signed in? Hey, do we want to go back to Mr. Williamson now, or do we need to go, just go back to Mr. Williamson because I hear we may need to discuss that? Mr. Williamson, would you join us a little closer, please?
I'll be off to the night.
Well, you?
Tomorrow. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, by being a part of the audience, uh, you've heard most of the interview, uh, so answering everything we asked him and we'll... I'm, I'm not sure that I can remember to repeat myself, uh, speaking not with those. But, uh, first, do you have questions relating to the, related to the position that you applied for?
I'm certain, not really, not after listening to the other, other guy talking, I mean, I think I know the answers that I need.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, we started with Ms. West, before the start, I'm on the other end of the table, you want to be first?
I've got one question. Do you know hello?
Yes, sir. Uh, I started working with a fellow named Michael Rogers about six or eight months ago. I was working here at TomTom. Uh, and I was driving out of St. Joe every day, running an off-road truck for him. And they transitioned me into running a tractor. I don't have a whole lot of experience. I'm really one of them. I am good, um, I do have a lot to learn. Only twenty-three, yes, sir.
I won't stop you. I'm surely a day.
Um, but I do have a lot to learn. I don't, I don't pretend to know everything. I like to learn. I like to just sit back and watch people and see how they do it, to learn different people's techniques, you know, try to make the job easier or better, however I can. Um, like I said, I don't have a whole lot of experience, so I'm definitely willing to learn. I try to be as self-motivated as possible. I can't stand sitting around, you know, I like to just get up and do something. I like to, I like to do a job where, when I'm done with it, people look at it, they know it's me, whether I was, they see me out there or not. You know, I want them to know.
The problem keeping records and stuff.
So, I can do that. I'm a certified, uh, security guard and a certified firefighter, so I'm very prominent with doing, uh, incident reports and stuff like that. And with working with Mr. Rogers, uh, we'd have to keep load counts and how much dirt or rock we were moving where, what times, stuff like that throughout the day. I, I try to keep a good handle on it, that at least cover my own butt if I can.
Understood.
You're on the Greenhead Party Department?
Yes, sir.
Are you dual enrolled with either department, Wausau or Vernon, or just?
I used to be on, uh, Sunny Hills, Greenhead and Vernon. But then I had two kids, uh, my first kid come right after the hurricane. And I lost my job during that, I lost my house and kind of bounced around, so I haven't done it recently. But I do have, uh, certifications, I do got all the paperwork that I can bring in. Uh, looks like I am a security guard certified, firefighter one certified. Uh, most things that you need, I probably got the paperwork for.
So, you, you completed the security guard?
Yes, sir. I have the license in my wallet right now, I can show you. Right now, the biggest problem with that is no one's wanting to pay a whole lot. They want, they want you to drive, you know, to Panama, Panama City Beach and pay minimum wage. You know, and I live down Bonnapalm, you know, I live five or six minutes away from here.
Oh, you live on Bonnapalm?
Yes, sir.
Are they at the Bonnapalm and, uh, Road Roaders?
Oh, okay.
You got there toward Dogwood Acres?
Not very far.
When you gave some of your boots, did you take some job descriptions in? Mr. Wilson?
There in your, in my English, you want?
No, no, I, I, I just, you can have it with memory. Uh, Mr. Wilson raises a good, a good point here. I think it was in the job description. I know it was something that we discussed and it was always a part of previous, previous maintenance personnel. And that is that in the event that we had a fire in the day, that they would take the truck and have.
At least keep the station open and cranking.
Get the station and have, uh, if it was where they could, have it take it to the scene so that a responding fire might just went later. I am EVO certified.
That was me.
That would have been, that's, that's. We can't tell you that, that, because we have a fire chief and.
Right.
We have to vet you and be comfortable with you and some things like that. But, uh, that would, that is a plus that we have somebody who can operate some of our fire equipment in the daytime. Because daytime response is the, that's, that's when it works. That's when everybody's the worst, except probably the chief, then now maybe Vernon. Because we didn't have volunteers, they, they usually own jobs.
Yeah, usually Adam or Sam has to come and shift, you know, to.
Yeah. Have the doors open, trucks running.
Yeah.
Or.
If he's EVO certified, he can drive.
If he's, if he does EVO.
I took my, uh, firefighter one class there at, uh, boat activity.
Does the EVO expire?
Uh, I don't believe so. I believe the way it works with fire departments.
You rather roll that one.
Well, I got mine and.
I don't think it expires, so I don't seem to have experienced it.
I haven't moved part troop in nine years, or however long I've been retired, but I, I might have. I might could get it out of, out of the shit.
Let me take out a few doors like I would have, you know?
Electrical plumbing, general maintenance kinds of things, you got?
Uh, I don't have any work experience with it, you know, I can't show you anywhere where I've done that kind of work. I have done a little bit of plumbing. Uh, electrical's a little harder, I'm colorblind. Um, as long as I've got somebody else with me, I can do it. Um, or as, as long as I know where the wire's supposed to go, where I can take them off, you know, and not look at colors, I can look at numbers, I can get it done. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not very good at, I'm not great at anything that I do, but I, I try my best to learn as much as I can, any way that I can.
Well, we don't sure any one of the white that knows that would fly. None of us does that.
We, we wouldn't have a job.
No, no, no.
I like that, John.
Well, I do, I like that.
Most of our, most of our, any, any of our new construction, new wiring and things like that, we certify electricians anyway. I think when we talk about electrical work order, it, it would be minor things, perhaps change a light switch and, uh, not necessarily a light rod, change light switch or.
Put in a flashlight.
Yeah.
That's a lot easier than what I was expecting.
Yeah.
And that's not to say that there wouldn't be some things that you need to know, uh, like, uh, records at the, at the whale, at the whale station, things like that.
We have operators that train you all day.
But, yeah, like I said, I can do, I can learn whatever you need me to learn. As I'll try, try my best. I'm not going to pretend like I know it all, or like I can just come in here and do everything you want me to. I'm not against calling somebody and, and asking them, you know, more questions. I'll probably aggravate everybody with how many questions I ask, because I try to make sure I do it right, you know, I don't want to. And I know when I do a job, it reflects on what I do, but it also reflects the city and the city council on everything that I do. So, I, like I said, I want to where, when I do a job and it's done, I want people to drive by and say, "That was James." You know, they know who it is, you know? That way it makes me look good, it makes the city look good, makes you guys look good.
You pass your trip to us?
Yes, sir.
Ms. West asked a question while they go about, uh, on call.
Anytime.
Anytime, yeah. And the way that works, we, we, well, I, I can only tell you what we do now. The, the council can change any of our things. Uh, what we do now is that on call nights or weekends, we don't, we don't add that to a check in terms of what we're paying. We add that in terms of time off or accrued time or something like that.
Okay.
So, so that you understand that, I don't know if you totally, you're very sad, but we would need to make sure.
Was that like a contact?
Contact, we get contact. Like for this year, I get contact, yeah. So, we only, you say three hours, I get like.
So, the job I worked before, I was working sixty to seventy hours a week and driving to St. Joe every day. So, I'm used to being gone most of the day and getting up whenever I need, and especially beyond the fire departments, you know, you never know when you're going to get toned out, when you got to wake up and go, so.
What we like, what we like to do is that you make contact, but not take it.
That is the gospel.
Keep me on the contact.
Ms. West, do you have additional questions? Mr. Wolfsham, additional questions?
No, no.
Okay, I, I think we plan to, to make a decision later tonight and Mark will let you know. How quickly could you begin work? How quickly could you set up a drip screen and?
We get our dr- uh, physicals at, the drip screen I can get pretty quick, you know, a background pretty quick. Our physicals, uh, we can use, Washington County's Dr. Sloan, they're out of the office until Tuesday, so it'll be Tuesday before we can get a physical.
So, we're looking at the, we, we're looking at a weak act prediction for anybody if it's sort of, looks likely.
Yes. Unless we waive the physical, you know? We're not waiving much here, you know?
I, I want to paper that, I don't know about you. I've got physical drip screens.
First, we go to Mary Ann and we do a level two D O T, uh, growth screen, so they're going to check for everything and some, we do the, we pay for the extra to do the medicine, oh, yeah.
If you took a ashtray and shit with it.
No.
Okay, thank you for telling, and, uh, Mr. Park will be interested with you sometime after the last meeting. I'll just there to, okay?
Thank you all stop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we, just to catch our breath, do we want to move on to the end up and then come back and do this last? While we're fresh into it, do we want to go ahead and discuss the?
Hardly, and then.
Uh, well, that's actually the first thing on your.
It is the hard, yeah.
Discussion, so we can, we can go ahead and take it here and I'll take it, take it, take it as it comes, all right? That would be, okay. Well, uh, I was, uh, disappointed after, after our other interviews, uh, didn't, that our, that our selection was not able to come to work for us and everything. And, uh, and we don't know if this will happen again, but we do have two others tonight that we need to look at. Does anything stand out, uh, closer or minus with either one of our candidates? Last time I think we had, I think we had one interview that was, uh, was above. The other, I think that, uh, I think both of them are probably good, good persons, good men. But, uh, I think one interview better than the other tonight. We got two, uh, applications, I think both of them interviewed well. I do think there's, uh, I think, I think the applications, I think the applications separate some of them, but I, I think they interviewed well. I think the license, the license, young man had the better application on paper. Anybody got a, or somebody speaks out real really? I'm out of words for not to chew gum. I, I give a.
Especially if that's your own camera, you know. Y'all sure help me with these meetings. I've cut out my minutes, you know, y'all were just too so.
I forget sometimes when I'm on the track or when I'm chewing gum. I need to read it rather than. Okay, what, what do we, what do we want to do with our applications tonight? Until next the agenda was almost ready for it to be through about five-thirty. Any comments on any of, either one of our applicants? What's, what's the council's thinking?
Willis, you sound good.
The license gentleman who we did.
He seems to be.
Motivated.
Motivated, and he's, you know, seems to be, even though he may not know how to do it, that he's willing to, you know, no matter what it is, to do the best he can at whatever it is, to make it look good, to make it pop. The last place without.
Do you need a motion to get over? I'll make the motion, like, I'll make the motion, we, we proceed and harp Mr. Willis.
Okay. And, and, okay, do, do we have a second?
I'll say for the motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I, I do think that I was, uh, based on the application versus the interview, I do think I was specifically surprised at Mr. Rivera's, uh, uh, interview. I think he did it.
I did too.
I think he did a good job on his interview, and he was making someone a good, a good, uh, a good employee, I think. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Walts now?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss? Yes, and the chair votes yes. And you'll take care of all the?
Yes, sir, I'll say hello. Mr. Park has been riding through town, and he asked me to bring up, uh, his list of places that he would like, uh, y'all to look at also. And then possibly start out with sending a town letter and then making an attorney letter to, to these residents, and they are Oglesby, Storm, Heller, Ward, and Thomas. Now, I understand that the Ward property is going to, is, is part of it's going to be sold.
For, okay, Storm is at the beauty shop?
Mm-hmm.
And Ward is where?
My, my.
Oh, no, this, oh, this one, okay. And Thomas is?
Rita.
Rita.
If y'all arrived by those.
The Rita, you're on, okay.
Yeah, I know that one too.
What back, what part of Ward's is going to be sold? Is that the part?
The main part of the conference that joins Miss Betty. I'm, I'm understanding that her son has bought that, is in the process of buying that from.
Betty's.
Yeah, Jo- uh, Joe.
Yeah, I'd be good at, oh, Joe is buying.
That's what, uh, Miss Betty says now. She's probably gospel, you know.
Extend, extend her yard on that to the corner there, you know.
Yeah, and.
Could we, Mr. Park, would you, would you permit that we add, and I'm not sure who the, who the owner, owner is now? And, uh, I think I asked Mr. Curtis one time, did we have to start over every six months with a letter? But the property we, we generally call the Lord Ranham property or the Lamar Ranham property, could we, could we add that?
Miss Sandman?
I think there's, I think there's a half somewhere behind all of them.
Mr. Santos? Mr. Santos out of Miami.
That's, that's right across from my granny was at, right?
Yeah, that cross from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I can, you know, I can go ahead and send a letter to these people. Are we going to get Jeff to send a letter to these people to start with? And then after that, if that don't work, we turn it over to county, and then it starts costing us.
You know, I think we need to send Marty to, to our attorney.
Yeah, I love the attorney.
Let him, yeah.
Shorten one of those states.
That's right, yeah. That's what.
I guess it's a paid bar faster, but it, but it gets some action, make the faster. And the, and the curious thing about this property is they got a, they got a nice couple of wives in there and, and the old house. And somebody comes to check in.
Mm-hmm, the guy, actually Uncle Neilan has said the guy actually comes. But they had some damage down there where supposedly they lived at, down in Miami or somewhere. So they come out and remodeled the inside of that trailer.
Yeah.
But then he said they'll leave and then they'll, won't come back until it's so high that they can't even hardly cut it. And they don't, I, they don't do, and they haven't done anything with the rest of all this house.
It's a Mexican, he told me, you know, they're Mexican.
Santos, yeah.
Santos.
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 One Santos.
All right, it sounded like we're in agreement, Walts. And, and if we could add that property to your list there, uh, what's the pleasure, council? Do we have a motion to, uh, begin code enforcement on these five pieces of property? Six pieces of property. Oglesby, Storm, Heller, Ward, Thomas, and Santos.
Who, who, where's Heller? Where's that at?
Thomas Richardson place down there on the corner of, uh.
Right there where that lady passed?
No, no. That's being cleaned up, we actually right now. If you ride by that, it's looking better. But no, it's, uh, on the Sixth Avenue there, just past the beauty shop, that next house there.
Oh, okay.
There is a house in there.
You got, you got a fence around it. What's the pleasure, council?
Y'all go ahead and make a motion that will do the board with the letters?
From the attorney.
Short with the attorney.
Yes, short with the attorney.
Got a motion, got a second. Any discussion on the motion? The chair votes yes. Have you?
Yes, yes.
This, uh, Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Ms. Park? Yes.
Tony, have your package on the last page. We've never done this, because we can't afford to go to these big meetings, you know. But that's just for your information. If you want to, uh, look at this and, and next month give me an answer on this, because it's July the twenty-third, that they need your answer, and have it back to the league by the twenty-eighth of July. But that's just for y'all to look at.
So we'll table that till next week.
And if anybody wants to go to that? You see the butcher, the high smoke table?
Number six?
Beechey and.
How long does it last?
We don't get tickets to Disney.
Yeah, we don't get free tickets. We don't get free tickets to Disney.
Okay, well, if any, if any of you would like to go to that, it would.
Just let me know.
And, and I'll, I'll tell you lots of conferences are worth while, but we would be, these, these motel's has got more people than we got in our town. We, we would not be, anything that comes through the league, the smallest cities portion of the league will, will keep us involved.
The Northwest Law.
No, that's not going to discourage. Okay?
Okay, y'all asked last week, last month for me to get the rates on, uh, on the twenty thousand dollar loan for the fire department. Uh, People South Bank has got three point ten percent fixed, so it's the same as they were. It's a little, uh, more than the other one, but it's closer to the math. Capital City Bank is about the same thing. The only thing Capital City Bank has that two hundred fifty dollar loan fee. So my recommendation again is to go with People South Bank since they're working on our credit loans.
Now, this twenty thousand dollars is different from the one that we talked about earlier in the, uh, that, that's going to come out of, uh, designated fire department funds. The payback from this is going to come out of.
Same thing.
Same thing, yeah. We're going to be managing back the both loan payments.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
You still have the honor slip, right?
Yeah.
Where is Judy? Is she sick or?
Deborah's sick. Deborah's been in the hospital. Her niece has been in the hospital for a month.
Yeah.
And she's caretaking hers.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
Uh, and this part of the fire department is for the, uh,
Floor.
Flooring and things like that, okay? Okay, what's the pleasure?
I already voted to do it, except you do them all the time. Need a motion to go with People South.
I'll make the motion that we go with People South.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? How you vote, Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Walts now?
Yes.
The chair votes yes.
Okay, got one more thing I need to add. Just, I just need permission. I see it now. We have two new residents coming out on, um, East Pioneer and West Pioneer. Uh, these are going to require bores, you know. Y'all wait, you know, we've, we've, over the years, and it's never been set back in, that we've waited to tap fee. But, uh, we're gonna have, they're, I told them, but they're going to pay for that border, that road. That border, that road fifteen hundred dollars, and we're not eating that. But anyway, the guy's already ready to pay. But I need to authorize some OPS, uh, for Thomas Richardson to help do those taps. Our maintenance is not going to be up to speed on doing bores and, you know, put saddling into that main line and going under that road, and then putting a meter in on the other side. That'd be a good learning experience for him.
There's so much done this before.
Yeah.
I know he, he's done lots of things for us. He's been our, really good too.
And Mr. Resher will be on the side, but I just think he'll be more adept at showing somebody how to do it. Mr. Resher cannot get in that hole and do that. I just need permission to hire him.
But how long before they're going to do it?
Yeah, we're gonna probably get it done within the next three weeks or so. My guy might be up to sort of speed, but not, not being.
Who's the wolf or Cinch?
No, Hawkins.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he does it.
Okay.
But we may have, we may have a meter close enough on Pioneer Road to that property. It's just, you know where they're clearing the property, just, uh, west of the EOC there?
Mm-hmm.
These people are moving there. Now, I know we got two meters right there close, and we, what we make it is use, utilize one of those meters for this property. We're gonna, Mr. Resher's gonna check it.
Okay, wait, wait, are you talking about the old, uh, Duke Jones property or?
It's part of that, part of that.
Part of the West Jones property.
It, it joins, uh, Mr. Newman's there, you know, this right there.
Between the, between, between, yeah.
New one.
I'd be surprised, I could use most of that.
But they're really working real fast on this out here on Pioneer Road, and he's ready to pay.
This way? Who, where's it going?
Uh, they sold Doris Owens' property out there. Doris is part of the, I think Debbie's dad owns some next to it.
Yeah.
And then Doris is, and then Mary's to it. Mary, it's right in the middle, but he's, he's from North Carolina.
Yeah.
Coming down here, putting them over, and they're gonna live here. But I just think to hire him is needed.
And a lot of peas grew out there, hadn't they? Lot of peas.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the pleasure? We need to, uh, do, do you need a motion on that?
I would like it.
Or you just let them stay?
I'm, I'm just letting them know we'll have to hire somebody, I think, to do this.
Okay, and, okay, I, I, I think you authorized it that if you want, want a motion because of the amount of money we'll, we'll.
No, no, we're gonna pay Cinch and the guys are gonna pay that, but we have to pay Thomas, you know.
All right, go ahead.
That's all right.
All right, Mr. Park, got anything for us tonight?
Yes, we got it covered.
Got it covered. All right, Ms. Walts now?
No, sir.
Ms. Weiss?
Knock, knock down.
Ms. Curtis not here. I don't have anything. Should we have another workshop?
That workshop we have next time is gonna be a little longer. We're gonna work on these jobs.
Yeah, I, I think that our next workshop, we need to come. Really, really.
When is it gonna be?
In office, the second case, you know.
It's about off. I think really, we, we can't maybe discuss all of it. We can certainly make lists and from time to time, just go down the list and pick up another item, if that's all I'm gonna. Do we have anything? I, I, sorry, we usually try to acknowledge our law enforcement for being with us. Anything from the sheriff's office tonight you'd like to say to us?
He's lost our resident.
Yeah, I live in Moss also, man.
You could walk.
I could walk to this. I feel lobby going on in this, this little town.
You see all our code enforcement names with me?
There's a couple more that need to be on there.
Well, give them to them.
Yeah.
It's Jimbo on there.
He is, yes, that's.
Okay, what about the house behind him? Uh, I, I just know his big names, uh.
Halfpipe?
Yep.
No, he's not on here.
I'm here. Have y'all been by his yard?
I have. It's right next door to the Heller's or the Richardson's there.
It's basically anybody from fifth to sixth, they don't keep their property up.
We have an adjournment meeting. Can we go back, Mr. Park, and add to your motion at this, this other property? And you second that motion, and your second is still be good?
Yes.
And.
I mean, the most, I can put my.
Halfpipe's property, it's just if he would consolidate some of this stuff, this property would look ten times better. He just has a stroke. Um, thing with Jimbo is, is, did he pull permits for that bomb?
Eventually he did, because it, they, top, bust it.
Okay, I was about to say, because I'm, you know, I'm not good.
Have y'all looked inside that burning tar?
I can't. Got to have it. He's paid to do that.
And you know the thing about him is, he's thought, it wasn't his, it was visible, because he put all the tars ready. It would be invisible, it would be a problem. I think if you drive around it bad, it gets being visible.
He gets in the old assembly of God Carson.
Yeah, yeah, right across from him. They said, muck his sleep.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I truly, I do know that the, the Thomas's, that they got to some other.
Y'all got, right.
They got, they have three. They have three cars that block half the, half the highway.
Half the road.
I saw, I did two days ago.
I go by, take pictures and send it to.
And so with that, if y'all own that street, y'all can tell them to move it, I'm told. Now y'all would have to eat toba. But you can tell when she's got to pay to get it out.
I mean, they put it out there.
Yeah, it's, it's where if somebody.
Up the middle of the road.
Wasn't paying attention, you'd get it.
If y'all had a high-speed chase, they'd crush, right?
Most likely.
And when we, when we get our new personnel, one of the things our person needs to do, if we don't have a, maybe need to get one, we maybe need to see if we can get the county to help or not. We need to shave our rice way back. We, I don't believe that the street in town where two cars are, are passing now, getting off the pavement or one stop, and, and Mr. Curtis said to let a little one pass. We need to.
Yeah, there's second streets.
But the second street is real bad. It may get worse since we changed the name.
One other thing, I mean, I yell at people all the time.
Well, we do appreciate.
Jefferson Street is turning into a, a racetrack. So I know he had Mark, he brought up it one time, so he tried to get some, uh, speed bumps put out, but.
We tried that one, though. We're like, we're in jail. John was barely.
They want pop before the John. But we do appreciate you being here. Please give our best to the sheriff. Any other business for the council tonight? The standard, oh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, we do have an acknowledgement here. Uh, says, thank you so much. During a time like this, we realize how much our friends and relatives really mean to us, your expression of sympathy would always be remembered, be Elizabeth John Hicks, and that was, uh, as Robert Hicks is quite, is passing, uh, we, we had sent flowers to that, uh, funeral. That's an acknowledgement. Okay?
Want to send a letter to all of our applicants, thanking you for applying?
Please do.